Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, January 11th, 2021. It's 7:02 in the evening and we're reconvening from our closed session. Mr. Stewart?
There was no reportable action at a closed session today, Mayor Coops.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So we're going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to announce the following. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be an audience member to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for their public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Rep. Tim Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here. We'll now have our city council announcements and I'll start off. And I'd like to remind everyone that outgoing mayor ceremony for Juan Garza will be held via Zoom on January 25th at 5:30 PM. The Zoom details will be posted on the meeting agenda. We welcome constituents, local business owners, and neighboring cities to tune into the event. Mayor Garza did a wonderful job during his 2019-2020 tenure as our mayor and we look forward to recognize his accomplishments. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. In December, the Bellflower Volunteer Center distributed boxes of food and a supermarket gift card to Bellflower families and gifts to their children for the Christmas Food and Toy Drive program that Bellflower does. A total of 255 families were served through the event. A huge thank you goes out to the Bellflower Noon Lions Club, the Office of Assembly member Christine Garcia, LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn, Liberty Utilities, Calvary Church, Walmart, and the Elks Lodge for generous donations. We are so grateful for the kindness and generosity of everyone that made this program a success and support. They did great and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
I need myself. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, the city's website is currently under construction. City staff is actively working to get the new website up and running with no glitches. That being said, we appreciate your patience. The new website includes an accessibility widget, user-friendly pages, and more. If you have questions about the website or need help, please call 562-804-1424 and I'll give an extension 2249. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Next, we have Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The state of California has a new grant opportunity available for small businesses. The California Small Businesses COVID-19 Relief Grant Program has extended the application deadline. Small businesses or small nonprofits must satisfy the required criteria to be eligible to receive a grant award. The amount of the grant funding ranges from $5,000 to $25,000. Businesses are eligible based on their annual revenue as documented in their most recent tax return. The application acceptance began on December 30th at 6:00 AM and has been extended to the deadline of January 13th, 2021. For more information on the grant, visit www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Bellflower is invested in helping business community survive and thrive during this pandemic. We partnered with Gift Bar to create a custom website for our residents to purchase digital gift cards. Merchants can now sign up for free to participate. To kick off this new program, the city has discounted gift cards available. For example, you can purchase a $50 gift card to participating Bellflower business and pay just $40 and that's a whopping 20% discount. These digital gift cards can be purchased at www.bellflower.com and you can add a selfie video message to the recipient and off it goes. Virtual shopping is the way to go this time of the year. For more information, please visit the website, www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sunny. All right, at this time, we will have public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item shall utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it'll appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press the number nine to raise your hand. You'll be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. So we're ready for public comments. Let's hear what we have.
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will move on in the next item, 9A. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Mayor, this is one item that has four separate resolutions on them, so I will read the resolutions separately. They all have to do with the business assistance development for the upcoming Stand Up Comedy Club, which is about 95% complete over on Belmont Avenue. The first is Resolution Number 21-03, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreement file number 793.2 in a form approved by the city attorney with the Stand Up Comedy Club for downtown alcohol licensing assistance for alcohol service at 9838 Belmont Street in accordance with Economic Development Business Assistance Plan, Chapter 1. Second resolution is Number 21-4, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreement file number 793.3 in a form approved by the city attorney with the Stand Up Comedy Club to grant loan funds for business improvements at 9831 Belmont Street per the Economic Development Business Assistance Plan, Chapter 2.1. Third resolution is 21-05, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreement file number 793.4 in a form approved by the city attorney with the Stand Up Comedy Club for building facade improvements at 9831 Belmont Street per the Economic Development Business Assistance Plan, Chapter 3. Last one is Resolution Number 21-06, a resolution amending the fiscal year operating budget 2020-2021 to increase the economic development account for business assistance program funds to cover the cost of doing these improvements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So who's going to be giving the staff report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Dalongya?
Hi. Yes, after that long intro, that's probably one of the longest titles we've had in a long time. Anika will be doing the presentation and we'll need to get the screen share, please, Madam City Clerk.
All right, we're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing is to consider grant applications from John Gerius, the owner of the Stand Up Comedy Club. He is applying for Chapter 1 for downtown alcohol licensing assistance, Chapter 2.1 for interior improvements for the box office and audio room, and Chapter 3 for new paint and upgraded signage. The Business Assistance Program provides loans or grants to attract and retain business thereby promoting the city's economic development. For background, the Stand Up Comedy Club leased the city's building on March 12th, 2018 and set out plans to convert the Youth Cultural Arts Foundation Theater to a comedy theater destination. Construction plans are initially on track but have been delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Finances have also been affected during this time. Since taking ownership, the building has been overhauled and is near completion. Due to the current COVID-19 regulations requiring establishments to cease indoor service, Mr. Gerius is using this time to adjust his business model to accommodate operations as pandemic restrictions ease. He is seeking to modify his current COP for extended operations with alcohol service. This modification will allow him to rent the facility for corporate and private events every day of the week and will allow him to serve alcohol in conjunction. His current state ABC license allows for service from 9:00 AM to midnight, so he is seeking allowance from the city for the same hours. Chapter 1 of the Business Assistance Program will provide the fee waiver for processing of a new COP. In addition to Chapter 1 assistance, Mr. Gerius is applying for Chapter 2.1 of the Business Assistance Program, which will provide a forgivable loan up to $25,000 for interior improvements. The program pays 50% of the overall project costs through invoice reimbursement. These funds will be used towards final finishes such as countertops and cabinets and light fixtures. Lastly, Mr. Gerius is applying for Chapter 3.0 of the same program, which will provide a forgivable loan up to $23,000 for building facade improvements. This program pays 66% of the overall project cost through invoice reimbursement. These funds will be used towards new paint and signage. All projects submitted are within the program guidelines. Here's a sample rendering of an updated facade. Plans for the new box office layout incorporating new countertops and cabinets are actively being developed. The city's Business Assistance Program is being sought out to help compensate businesses with their current finances and potential future losses. We have recently approved two applicants within six months and aside from the Stand Up Comedy Club, there are a number of businesses seeking to apply in the near future. In order for the program to continue, staff is recommending a budget amendment to fund the current applicant as well as future potential applicants in the current fiscal year. A total amount of $220,000 in unused funds from fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget can be moved over to the current operating budget to help fund the program. Economic Development staff has reviewed the Stand Up Comedy Club applications for assistance and determined that they do qualify. This assistance will support Mr. Gerius's efforts to open a successful business, promote local economic development, and downtown revitalization. Tonight, staff recommends the city council open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution 2103 through 2106, authorizing the city manager to execute follow agreements 79.2, 79.3.3, 79.3.4 with the Stand Up Comedy Club for downtown business assistance chapters and also approve the budget amendment to carry over $220,000 of unspent funds from fiscal year 2019-2020 to fiscal year 2020-2021 for the Business Assistance Program. Staff is available to answer questions and Mr. John Gerius is also on the call to provide any additional details. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. And let's, we'll poll the different council folk to see whether or not they have any questions. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, have you any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anika, can you show the previous slide? Okay, so I'm just looking at this. I'm glad we were able to carry over $220,000 from 2019-2020. Do you recall how much was total budget for these two line items?
Okay, Sunny, I just want to make sure I understand your question. The adopted 2021 budget for these programs is $120,000.
No, no, no. I'm asking about 2019-2020.
Oh, okay.
Because you're asking to carry over. So I'm curious, how much was the original budget?
Correct. Okay, thank you. 1920 for the economic development projects was $120,000.
Okay.
And public space.
We used 20.
Correct.
Okay.
And public space improvements was $151,000.
Okay, so the same amount as this year.
Same amount for both years, yes.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, I just want to make a quick comment that I'm really glad that the city is able to provide this funding to help our businesses because this investment in our business will come a long way. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzinez. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, have you any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Not really any questions at this time. I did visit the site and I want to say that I see the tremendous effort that's gone into this project and development by the owner. It's state-of-the-art and hopefully we can assist businesses like him and others in our city of Bellflower. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Raymond Hamada, have you any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one. Staff, I mean, this is not a new program. I think this is the third request in the last couple of years.
Actually, it's the third request in the past two or three months. We've had, yeah, the Nest, the Nest Timbien, Golden Corral, and even before that Victory Drug was before you guys for an approval. So it has been around, but I think with COVID, it has started to pick up a little momentum, whereas it might have been more sparsely spaced out in the past.
Yeah, this is a great program. Again, I'm glad that we have budgets to, again, assist, you know, quality projects to move forward and to help it, just to help it along. And this is something that definitely makes Bellflower great in that aspect. So it's, and again, I too have been to the site over the last number of months. And again, I've seen the variety of improvements and the public will be pleasantly surprised with the improvements. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, have you any questions of staff?
No questions, Mayor. But with that, if you don't have anything, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, there's a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so Mr. Hamada made the motion for a second and it was a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton to open the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. All right, so at this point, we'll invite the public to participate. So Madam City Clerk, please allow anyone to speak. Come forward.
I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Deputy Madam City Clerk.
Move away. Close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all right, so Mr. Dutton made the motion, seconded by Mr. Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Any discussion you'd like to have on this item? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve or disprove.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think the applicant is here.
Okay.
So if you can give him a chance to address the council?
Okay. Mr. Gerius, would you like to come forward with any observations or information that we haven't discussed?
Well, at the moment, I would love to just thank the city and the council and everyone who's involved with the development of this project. I look forward to making this establishment a flagship in the city and I look forward to a great partnership. So thank you again for taking up this matter.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure you can. Go right ahead.
Yeah, John, a couple of things. One, I want to thank you for choosing Bellflower and I too, I'm very impressed with the improvements you have made on the facility. I look forward to seeing some comedy shows out there. But my question to you is, should the pandemic go away? Okay, should the pandemic go away? Tomorrow, when can you open the Stand Up Comedy?
Well, that is a very good question. If the pandemic was not as it is now and it's safe to allow patrons to enter the establishment, we would probably be ready in a month's time to open up with the delays, which means preparing ourselves for making sure the protocols, safety for employees and patrons with COVID. There's a lot more that's involved and a lot more expenses that were not, you know, looked at previously. So we're really taking an extra effort to make sure that the interior and exterior meet all safety protocols prior to opening. So that does take us, that does create a little more time for us.
So the bottom line is if the county health department lifts all the restrictions, you can open in no time?
Correct. Where we're situated at the moment, we would just need the veil of uncertainty to be released and we would be able to function normally, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Any other questions that you'd like to offer to John?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sunny. Anybody else in the council want to ask a question of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Hey, John, first of all, I want to thank you for the tour earlier today. If you don't mind, just for public record and for the audience, purpose of the audience, would you mind just sharing a brief 30-second highlight of what you're creating there and how you're making it unique on the interior?
My pleasure. We intend on creating and we have created an entertainment venue, not just a comedy club, that is something that no other city can tout. It's an intimate environment that I think a lot of patrons and the community can enjoy both day and night. And it's just, again, creating an atmosphere that is unique. A lot of historical items that are in the club that just gives us an edge and a special niche that not other venues can have. So having something like this in the city just creates another element for the downtown district to thrive and that's what we're excited about.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the answer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Any other questions or are we ready to do a vote?
Oh, Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'm going to try to do it all in one, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's permissible.
I'd like to adopt Resolutions 21-03, 21-04, and 21-05 and also adopt Resolution 21-06 to approve the carryover of unspent funds for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 program budget funds to the fiscal year 2020-21 to fund the Stand Up Economy Club's application and potential future applicants for the Business Assistance Program also. That'll be my suggestion.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. Any further discussion? All right, let's do the roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right. Moving on to 10A. Mr. Stewart?
This is an ordinance. It's consideration of possible action to adopt, sorry, resolution. Consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution Number 21-02, a resolution to record a notice of specialist assessment for nuisance abatement at 14712 Cerritos Avenue, APN 6278-014-042. And this is an item that's been well discussed by the city council previous times. And who's making the presentation on this one?
I'll give the presentation today, Jeff.
Ms. Corpus?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. 14712 Cerritos Avenue is a single-family home in the residential zone that has been in a state of remodel since at least 2015. The exterior of the home remained a blight to the neighborhood with exposed walls and other unfinished construction. City staff and the city attorney's office have expended substantial resources over the years attempting to gain voluntary compliance to finish the remodel, extending building permits, filing a public nuisance lawsuit, and other enforcement efforts. The exterior of the property has finally been completed and the city's abatement efforts have concluded. The Bellflower Municipal Code allows the city to recover abatement cost by recording a special assessment upon the real property. The city incurred a total of $29,768.78, which include legal fees. The property owner has been provided with an opportunity to pay intermittent payment or to contest the cost incurred and has not done either. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 21-02 imposing a delinquent special assessment to recover the city's abatement cost on the property or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. Both myself and the Assistant City Attorney, Tim Kempin, are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corpus. So do I understand you to say that we have notified the owner of 14712 Cerritos and there's as to what will be occurring and they've been non-responsive?
Yes.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and have city staff, I mean, the city council, ask any questions. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, do you have any questions of staff on this item?
Just one that this is the last and final tally of this property that is owed to the city?
To my knowledge, yes.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Raymond Hamada, what do you have for questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for the record, I do have property interests within 1,000 feet of it, but there's no conflict for me, so I will continue on this matter. Really no questions, just a comment. This is somewhat long overdue. I mean, costs have incurred since summer of 2018 and I've had received over the years, a couple of years here, somewhat of an earful of comments from local residents in regards to this property and they're all pleased that it's been taken care of and now we got to deal with the legal matters here on recouping our costs. And so it's time. So glad we're moving on it. So let's move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, have you any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions for staff at this time. Just the same similar comment as my colleagues. It seems like it's a long overdue item and I think that it's only fair that we recruit the funds. So that completes my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, have you any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am very pleased that we're seeing the end of the road here. And just to confirm, Ms. Corpus, that based on the staff report, the last communication with the owner was on December 15th to signify the statement of abatement cost. And so you have not received any response from them? Phone call, letters, email, nothing?
From the city staff standpoint, we have not received any payment or any phone calls. I'd also ask the Assistant City Attorney if he has received any correspondence as well.
Okay, all right. Now, the next question I have is, should there be additional costs incurred after we filed this? Do we need to send a supplemental? How will the supplemental billing work out?
Councilmember Santanez, Tim Campen, Assistant City Attorney here, and Mayor and City Council, good evening. There will be some nominal costs still. There will be a court appearance in order to get the court order, in order to enact this assessment and so forth. There's going to be a... We can try to add in, up to the moment that we appear before the court to request these funds, but the amount that's been authorized by the council will get almost everything that the city has incurred as part of this abatement effort. There might be some lingering matters that require some minor funds.
Okay, so at this point, you don't expect any more, any additional significant funding that we may incur?
That is correct, Councilmember.
All right, thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santanez. Mr. Campen, so would you... A nominal fee to me would be less than $500 in additional of what we've already conjured up. Does that sound about right, or what do you think? What are we... What other costs can we incur beyond this?
I will have to file a formal motion before the court to get the order for the special assessment. This resolution obviously is an integral and necessary part of that process. I would ask the city attorney to chime in on what he thinks the costs would be. I think he would be a better judge of that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is Carl. It's probably going to be below $2,000, as Mr. Campen stated, though. Some of that can be folded into the full order. This is simply the city council's direction to direct that this amount, as we know it today, be recorded against the property. Once we get the final court order, the court will award additional costs based upon our estimates and allow that to be recorded against the property as well. So I would say roughly around another $2,000, and that should... Well, in this day and age with inflation, would be nominal, quote unquote.
But the city will not be responsible for those additional charges? It'll be added to the $29,000 we've already been asking for, correct?
That's correct. We will recover it from the property owner.
All right, that makes us all feel better. All right. Those are all the questions from council, unless anybody else developed a question after that discussion. Let's go ahead and get public comments on this item. Deputy Madam City Clerk, please allow that.
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Deputy Madam City Clerk. All right, so looking for a motion and to see how we should proceed on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh.
I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt resolution 21-02, a resolution to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement at 14712 Cerritos Avenue.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sonny Sanzinez, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted a friendly amendment probably to that motion. Would it be wise for us, since we've heard from the attorney and that other bills may arise, should you guys put in your motion to say that any other bills that come due before the time that the trigger is pulled on collecting, that we can increase the amount to what's due?
I believe that that's automatic, because there's no amount in the resolution. Oh, there is an amount in the resolution?
Amounts in the staff report.
In the resolution, but according to court, it can be... Once this is approved by the court, we can submit a supplemental invoice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would be submitting the court order with this resolution to the tax collector to collect any additional money.
Okay.
Are you good with that, Ray?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right. Madam City Clerk, do the roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, moving on to 10B, Mr. Stewart?
This is a consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number 21-07, a resolution implementing Title 14 of the Bellflower Municipal Code by establishing policies and procedures for obtaining and maintaining cannabis business permits, and amending resolution number 20-75 in its entirety. Randy has a staff report. I believe Carl brought us some additional information as well that he's going to present. Why don't you go ahead, Randy?
All right. Randy, you're on.
Thank you. Just one moment, please. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm presenting Agenda Item 10B, which is to consider adopting a resolution establishing the definition of ownership for purposes of the Bellflower Municipal Code. Also, we are looking for council direction regarding a policy decision on name change. In December, the city council asked that an item be included for tonight's council meeting to consider what a change in ownership meant for the purposes of a cannabis business permit. This arose from Council... Excuse me, this arose from Councilmember Santanez's question on the topic during the renewal of NC3 System, Inc., doing business as Kaliva, their cannabis business permit renewal. The council agreed to first determine what ownership change meant, and then allow Kaliva to submit evidence showing that its ownership remained unchanged for purposes of having its CBP renewed. Tonight, the council is being asked to define the word "ownership" for purposes of the cannabis business permit renewals. Resolution 21-17 would define the term "ownership" as "a person with an aggregate ownership interest of 25% or more in the person seeking a CBP or permittee seeking a CBP renewal, unless the interest is solely a security lien or encumbrance, or an individual who will be participating in the direction, control, or management of the permittee." To meet the requirements of the BMC regarding CBP renewals, a permittee would need to demonstrate that there were no changes in ownership. Staff is also seeking policy direction regarding name changes. Since 2016, the city council steadfastly maintained that a change in name equated to a change in ownership. Companies could certainly change their name, but that would require filing a brand-new CBP application rather than simply seeking a CBP renewal. We are aware of at least one permittee that would like to change its name, but not make substantive changes in ownership. If the council is interested in allowing for such changes, the matter can be brought back to a future city council agenda for consideration. Since any change would also cost the city less for processing an application, a lower application fee could potentially be charged. This evening, staff is looking for council's direction related to resolution 21-07 and potential ownership and name changes related to cannabis business permits. And staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. So does Carl have something to offer, too, at this point? Or is that the complete report at this time?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did have a small conversation with Councilmember Sonny Santanez, but I will leave it to him to pose his questions. I provided some suggested language that hopefully takes care of his concerns, but I wouldn't want to steal his thunder.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Berger. So let's start off with Sonny Sanzinez. If you have a question, let's present it now.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, I brought this issue at the last renewal meeting for the CBPs. And one of the things I pointed out is the change in ownership. I think, as a council, we are kind of steadfast in terms of changing ownership of the business. But at the same time, I'm keenly aware that things change. Some owners may kind of part in the partnership of the ownership in a particular business. And from the outset, I'm okay with a small change in ownership. And the reason I bring this up is, if you recall, in the initial application for CBPs, we were very strict. I think we did a fantastic job in vetting the applicants back then. They were fingerprinted, background checked. We looked at their criminal records, any civil litigations against them. So they were basically vetted well. And what I'm concerned about is, if we just allow a significant change of ownership without going to reapplication, we lose that scrutiny, so to speak, of these applicants. So in looking at the staff report, I'm... Based on my interpretation, staff is recommending that any change up to 25% will be permissible based on the definition of ownership. So that means that 75% will stay the same. And in my follow-up discussion with our city attorney today, my concern is maintaining that 75%. That 75% to me should be maintained based on the initial application of the CBP back on day one of the application. Because my concern is, I don't want to see accumulative changes. So for example, let's say this year, 20% is sold, which is okay, within the 25% range. And then next year, another 20% is sold. So in effect, 40% have been sold already. So what I want to suggest is modify the language in the resolution to kind of take care of that. And the... Let me pull this up. And the modification that I'm proposing here is based on recommendation from the city attorney is... So we will insert between the time of filing of the initial application for CBP and the filing of renewal application in any subsequent year. So at least, we are maintaining that 75% of what was vetted back in day one. Okay? So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Santanez. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, have you any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, but at this time, I'm still trying to process the definition here. If... My understanding... I kind of like what Councilmember Sonny Santanez is mentioning, where the 75% ownership must be held. In the case, though, let's say that there is a party where it's 50-50%, and one party never actually comes through on their agreement or the reason that they were a partner, and they fall through, and they're removed from ownership. Is that... Would that trigger the similar circumstances, or... Does that make sense? What I guess what I'm trying to say here is, if there's two parties, two individuals, who are 50-50 partners, Partner A is actually doing all the work and has kept his word, Partner B has, you know, pretty much taken off and is nowhere to be found, would that trigger that same requirement?
Mr. Berger, would you like to comment on that possibility?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was trying to share my screen to show you where the suggested language would be inserted. But I seem to be having technical glitches on my computer, so I apologize for that. The... I believe in Councilmember Santanez, and correct me if I'm wrong, his concern is a change in ownership from the time of the initial application. So all the current permities were processed from 2017. And so in order to make a determination if there was an ownership change, we would look back to the original application in 2017 and move forward for each subsequent year to determine whether the definition of ownership would have been triggered for purposes of a change in ownership. And so Councilmember Sanchez, to get to your question, the issue would be if, let's say, it was a two-person partnership, the one person who was part of the application dropped out for whatever reason from a business standpoint. If that were the case, then there would have been a change in ownership, because that person would have dropped out of the initial application. The idea behind both regulatory scheme in the Bellflower Municipal Code and the council's direction on the entire process has been that the original applicants that were vetted, interviewed, background checked, and what have you, those are the people that the city council has entrusted with these particular permits. And so if one of those individuals dropped out of the organization, there would indeed have been a change in ownership, which would require a vetting of a new person. So I believe under the scenario that you provided, the answer would be, yes, there would be a change of ownership, which would trigger the need for a brand-new application and would have actually voided the existing permit, because there can... Under the municipal code, there cannot be a change in ownership. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carl. Okay.
Victor, you have any other questions?
No, not at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Raymond Hamada, have you any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember when I first started, and I think the renewals were on that meeting. And I had to go through a lot of paperwork and really make sure that we were actually talking to the right person. There was one particular application. It seemed like the name was changing all the time. So I'm glad we're, you know, tightening up on the standards. And yes, I agree that we need to deal with the original owners and as it comes time for any sort of housekeeping of the ownership that we are, again, made aware of it and that we could make sure that, you know, we are working with the people that we originally, you know, gave the approvals. One of my questions goes to the resolution. Maybe Carl, because when I was comparing it to the red line, and on the page 10 of 11 of the resolution, the very top, that section under, let's see, delegation of authority, let's see, ratification, previous actions. Now, under the old resolution, that was a separate section. And now it appears to be sort of part of Section 16 under the testing. Is... Was that on purpose, or... Or is that a...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 2019, if you recall, there was a series of hearings in which some permits, some permit renewals were denied. And the city council determined at that point that those permities who had been denied but had originally been provided in 2017 a permit should have the opportunity to come back and be reconsidered for a renewal. Part of that process required those permities to actually prove up that they had additional information and would provide additional benefits for the community. That was resolved, and so all of the current permities are currently in operation and are producing revenue. And so the same concerns for the city council, I do not believe, exist. Resolution that was adopted by the city council in December inadvertently contained the old language from 2019 in it. And so if you look at the red line, you'll see that I have removed that because it was really a cleanup item as opposed to substantive change to the council's direction on it. I hope that helps.
All right, so that should be taken out?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be sure. I did see the cross-out of the section number, and then the body of that section stayed. And then it seemed to not...
Yeah, we can thank Bill Gates for some of these changes.
Okay, all right. I knew it was him. All right. All right. Thank you, Carl. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, have any questions or comments?
No questions, um, just a comment. We always knew this would be work in progress. But this is, uh, the best thing we have for, you know, to fix things. It gives us a little, uh, leeway on the fixing. Just a comment, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I have a question. One of the things that brought up during the staff report from Ms. Dover was whether or not we wanted to amend or change the fees having to do with these applications. Was that part of the discussion?
So bullet point number two was to asking council for direction related to name changes or entity changes.
Right.
If that were to happen.
To apply a dollar figure for that kind of work?
For review of those applications would likely be less than the 28.5 for a full application review. So if council decides that they would like to move that way, when we come back with additional items, we can include a fee that is more objective to this review process.
Do you, would you like to hear the opinion of the council at this time or is it too premature?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Dutton, you want this fees to remain the same, reduced or greater as we examine these potentials?
I think we need to get paid for our time.
All right. So do you want to increase it, decrease it or remain the same?
This, we'll, it's fee recovery, so, um, if it needs to be increased because of cost 11, yes. Um, if, if somebody has a change of, uh, ownership of, of 25% or, or less, that is a burden that, that we have to endure. So we need to get, recover the fee for that, but there's gonna, you know, I think of what Randy said, is they gotta work on a fee schedule. But yes, if, uh, if it's gonna endure more fees on anything and, and it costs more to do it, then we need to collect.
I, I'm not sure that's the point. The point, I believe, is that we were thinking, staff was thinking that most of these reviews would actually entail less labor than the original applications. And we were looking at making the reapplication fee, if you will, one that was based more on time and, and, and labor and, uh, the energy spent by staff, city attorney and city council on the processing of this. And I think that it should be based on reality. Instead of arbitrary figure, $28,000 for a, a review on, on a slight change seems to be a little bit high. On the flip side, if we're gonna require a fully new application process for an ownership change, that might require the full $28,000 application. Carl, you have any opinions on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what we're looking for right now is if the council wants to have a policy with regard to name change and if the answer to that question is yes, then we are going to place a future agenda or an agenda item for the next city council meeting. We actually have to, uh, notice as a public hearing, any fee, new fee. And at that point, the council will be provided with, uh, objective data regarding how much it will actually cost the city to process a name change. As both Jeff and Randy mentioned, the reasonable guess on that is that it will cost less than a full application and may actually cost less than a renewal application. But we will have to make that calculation at a different, uh, city council meeting after a public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berger. I won't.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, then I'll, I'll change my comment from your question now that I kind of understand it a little bit more. I think we ought to keep the fees the same once we establish them. I get that there's less work, but, um, it is cannabis. Then also if there's a name change and whatever, then, then, that needs to, uh, be collected the full boat at that time if we're gonna do the whole complete investigation. Collect the money.
Okay.
Is my vote.
All right. Well, as long as we've gotten here to weigh in on this, uh, council member Hamada, how do you feel?
I think at this time, I, I concur, uh, unless there's some, um, some regulation that, you know, prohibits us to, uh, to collect more than, than what, uh, uh, is needed, so to speak. So, but, uh, I, I think, uh, cause I asked something similar, uh, I think a couple meetings ago in regards, uh, when, uh, the fees came up again and, uh, and back, and then we were advised, uh, it's a, you know, time and material type of thing, so. But if this one's, uh, this one's appropriate, I think, I think it, it can work, uh, with, uh, with no change and, and, uh, let's, let's, uh, collect and, and see how it works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Council member Victor Sanchez, have you, uh, an opinion on this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, I do. I, uh, on the matter of it being a ownership change as well as a business name change at the same time, it, it would make sense that a full, in my opinion, it would make sense that a full review fee, um, be applied, which would be the 28,500, uh, in the time of a, just a name of, or change of business name where, where no ownership changes. I think staff are saying that it's, you know, less encumbersome and, uh, less cost or it is not as high of a incurred cost. I, I'm open to that idea as long as a recovery is there, uh, of all the funds taken into reviewing the name of change of the business name, not ownership. If ownership occurs, then it should trigger the entire amount, in my opinion. So I'm a, I'm a little bit, uh, divided there as, uh, council member Dutton and Hamada. But that, that concludes my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Council member Sunny Santienez.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I think the issue is twofold. One is, um, I, I think staff is asking for direction from us regarding, uh, CBP name changes. And I think that's, we need to address that first. Are we gonna be allowing, um, changes in the business name? Because I think if I recall correctly, uh, way back when, when we started this, we kind of equated name changes to a business, to a ownership change. So we didn't allow back then a change in name. But I think it happened already. I think one of, one of our permities changed its name. Uh, so I think, uh, that's one thing, that's one direction that, um, that's a direction that staff is, is looking from us. And secondly, regarding fees, uh, if you recall, in the initial application, uh, staff did a time in motion study to come up with the 28,000 and some change. It, it wasn't just kind of came out of the blue. There was something that supports the 28,000. And that's how we operate. It's based on cost recovery. So I think we have to leave it up to staff, uh, in terms of determining, uh, the fee that should be charged for a full application, reapplication, or just change in name. And they can come back to us with a fee schedule. Okay? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Does that conclude your remarks, Mrs. Santienez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Dutton, would you want to say something? I thought I heard you.
No, I had my comments earlier.
Okay. I agree with what Sunny said with regard to, uh, you know, the benchmark has been set at 28.5 and, uh, but we do need to be cognizant of the fact that, uh, we can't charge only what it is that time and material that we're developing. So I guess we're gonna ask city staff to develop a schedule that we can look at at a subsequent meeting.
Right. I think that's what I was gonna recommend. We don't need to make this decision tonight. I mean, I think that we have our direction based on the clarification provided by Mr. Santienez and Mr. Berger. We can bring that item back. As far as the fee schedule, we have to notice that hearing anyway and do a public hearing on that and do a theme, the, the time motion study and find out what it is. Uh, Mr. Santienez is correct on that. And I think that's all we're asking for tonight on that. If everybody is comfortable doing that, then we'll bring it back.
So are there any other portions of this ordinance that we need to give a reaction to or are you?
I believe for now, we have the language that we need with the clarifications provided by Mr. Santienez, which was actually very helpful, um, to move forward at this, to bring that item back for correction then and to set the wheels in motion for, uh, the additional fee discussion that we need to have. Unless Mr. Burger differs in any way, I think that's the direction I'd recommend we go.
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I mentioned, I was having technical problems trying to draw it up, but I did send the language to the city clerk, so maybe she can screen share, uh, what council member Santienez was talking about so that the councils are all on the same page. All right. She does have it up. So this was the suggested language from the council member and if, if the council is okay with that language, then, uh, the draft resolution would be amended as such. And my recommendation would be to adopt the resolution.
All right. So do you guys want to take a look at what's been put on the screen? Can you all see it to consider it? And then in the meantime, we'll, uh, open up for public comments. Madam City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, would you please open up the public comments section?
Mayor, I'll give the, uh, public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you for that, Deputy Madam City Clerk. So, uh, my council colleagues have had a chance to look at what's been presented by council. And if so, do you have any questions or would you like to go forward with a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion, um, for the city council of Balfour to adopt resolution 21-07, a resolution implementing title 14 of the Balfour Municipal Code for establishing policies and procedures for obtaining and maintaining cannabis business permits and amending resolution 20-75 in its entirety as amended on this, uh, on the screen.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by council member Santienez and supported by council member Raymond Hamada. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
I'm Dutton.
Aye.
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 Council member Santienez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right. Moving on to 11A, Mr. Stewart. Sanitation District.
This item is consideration of possible action to select the 2021 alternate to Los Angeles Sanitation Districts number 2, 3, and 18 percent of resolution 19-92. You have a staff report in front of you. I believe, Mr. Coops, you've had subsequent discussions and you want to make an amendment to that selection on this item tonight or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ordinarily, the mayor serves as the representative at the LA County Sanitation Districts and they represent districts 2, 3, and 18. We've had some, uh, continuity with the council member Santienez serving on that board since he has involvement with the Personnel Commission over there. And I honor what he's been able to do over there and I like that he would continue to like to be a delegate on my behalf. At the same time, uh, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton has indicated that he would like to represent, uh, as my alternate, uh, districts number 2 and 8. And Sunny would, of course, be our alternate for district number 3. So that would be my suggestion and, um, open up for any questions of me or the potential candidates.
Two, districts 2 and 18, I believe, for Mr. Dutton.
Yeah, 2 and 8, is it 18? And number 3.
For Mr. Santienez, correct.
Yes. So that's the, what's on the table, guys. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll have the public, um, make some comments. Crickets. All right. Madam, Deputy Madam City Clerk, why don't you open up the public comments section?
Okay, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Deputy Madam City Clerk for your recommendation. So, um, I'll make a motion that, uh, my alternate will be Sunny Santienez for District 3 and he'll be partnering with Ray Dutton for alternate for districts number 2 and number 8. Do I have any support for that motion?
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
All right. So we got a motion by Coops and the support by Councilman Santienez. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Member Hamada?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Council member Santienez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Okay. On to consent counter, calendar, number 12. Uh, are any items council members wish to be pulled for separate discussion or consideration?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just thought to pull, uh, item, um, 12E just for a comment, not for a separate vote, just for a comment.
12E?
12E.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Santienez? Is that?
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other council colleagues like to pull something for discussion?
Right. Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to, uh, uh, pull 12TD just for a comment.
12B like boy, correct?
Uh, D as in?
David.
David.
All right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss or? Do we have any recusers or conflicts? Okay. So, uh, 12E, Mr. Santienez, go forward.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Mr. Stewart, uh, Mr. Tegrey and the finance team for coming up with this recommendation. Uh, if you look at this agenda item, uh, it, it will save the city a significant amount of money. Money that, uh, we barely need, uh, we, we sorely need, especially, for example, especially paying for, uh, our temporary homeless shelter and our expenses and, and things like that. So I really want to publicly thank the whole finance team, uh, to come up with this great recommendation. They vetted the, find the, um, the bond companies and I think, um, they did a fantastic job to come up with this recommendation. So hats off to you, Jeff, uh, Tay and the entire finance team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sunny Santienez. That was very complimentary. All right. Uh, Mr. Hamada, 12D, you're on.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh, again, I too would, uh, just want to extend thanks to Mr. Stewart, to Mr. Grecki and Mr. Mocaninigas, uh, in, uh, working with, uh, working with Edison. You know, some areas of town are, are deficient of, uh, of, you know, open space and park area. And, uh, to have a Zen Park continue, uh, that's a blessing, uh, so far, so good. Uh, so it's, it's, it's definitely an opportunity for the neighbors, uh, out there. The neighbors have mentioned it's, it's a great place to walk and, uh, and, uh, you know, they enjoy it. So, uh, again, uh, just kudos to staff to, uh, continue to, uh, uh, work with, uh, work with Edison. You know, sometimes it gets tough, but, uh, we have a, we have a, we have a park there for another five years. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Hamada. We had no recusal or conflicts, uh, so I'd be looking for a motion for the consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Dutton. Was that Mr. Hamada who made the second or Mr. Sanchez? Who was it?
Second by Hamada.
All right. Second by Mr. Hamada. With that, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Council member Santienez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right. Council reports. Let's, uh, Victor Sanchez, have you anything that you'd like to report this evening?
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Actually, I'd just like to take a quick moment to, um, to acknowledge, uh, my newly appointed Parks and Recreation Commissioner Sandra Espinoza, um, who I, uh, I'm sure will do a really great job on the Parks, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission as well as my planning commissioner, uh, Juan, Juan Garza, who will be appointed as well, or who was appointed this evening, and Jerry Troutman to my Public Safety Commission. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my, uh, reports at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada, council reports. Have you anything for us?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, um, I too want to extend again, thanks to my commissioners, uh, again, Aaron Drake to be reappointed to the, again, planning commission, um, again, my, uh, my Public Safety Commissioner, again, Larry Myers. He, well, he wanted, uh, he was very interested in public safety. He, he is, he has quite a background in that, so, uh, he showed interest and so, uh, I, uh, suggested he. I suggested he move over there and then newly newly appointed Michelle Worley for Parks and Rec. So thank you to those individuals. On December nineteenth, I too joined in on the festivities for the food and toy distribution. Again, I want to thank PJ and then Michelle and and the rest of the staff for serving over two hundred and fifty families. Last, well, this past Thursday, I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee Zoom, and there was reported that the California Air Resources Board accepted the Connect SoCal. But they had, you know, eight recommendations for the staff to address in the next plan. So overall, that was pretty good, and so they'll be jumping on that. There was some discussion on the regional safety plan targets, and that that's in reference to accidents. And it was reported that in the region, over sixteen hundred people were killed last year and sixty three hundred were seriously injured. Over one hundred and thirty six thousand people were, you know, injured with minor injuries. And of course, the top contributing factor was unsafe traffic speed. So that's something that they'll be working on. I think the plan is obviously to work towards towards zero deaths, but that's a lot of comments were made that it was not realistic, but they'll be looking more under the safe systems approach. So they'll look at the big picture, work with all the agencies and trying to move forward there. We had an update with the California High Speed Rail Authority, and they're still working on it. The Central Valley, one hundred and nineteen miles is being worked on right now, and they're gonna extend it to San Francisco and all the way down to San Francisco. So the area that's affected here is is the is the current Los San rail line, the Los Angeles San Diego, and but some of the people from the east are raising concern because the owner, which is BNSF, is gonna need storage yards towards the east, and that's gonna take trains towards the east. So the cities out there are raising concern there. So there'll be some more discussion on that. Also, that Thursday, I did attend the SCAG Regional Council, and the council took action on the climate action plan. It was great to hear that Bellflower was, again, well ahead of the game back in two thousand and twelve, the city adopted their climate action plan. And this past, well, that same evening, I attended the League of California Cities General Meeting. The guest speaker was Mike Bedrid. He was one of the co-founders of the Lincoln Project. So I'll just leave it as an interesting discussion. So and I know that it'll be reported later, but I this past Saturday, I did attend the funeral of Milt Gilman, of this kind of show, the brochure, and if you see the picture, you probably recognize Milt. He's kind of one of the quiet giants in town. He was he was a superstar. He was a he was a helper just all around. And so just want to extend, again, blessings and prayers to the Gilman and and the McAhee families. And Milt, you know, got a Bravo Award last year. So if you remember Milt coming up on stage. So great man, and he's gonna be missed. All right. And I know there'll be probably some more comments on that. So with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Please forgive me. I was, as a new guy on the block here, I wasn't aware that I was supposed to do my request to adjourn in memory of three individuals at this time. Would you like me to do that now, or would you like me to wait till after all the reports have been submitted?
No, why don't you go ahead now with whoever you were gonna adjourn in memory of?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, again, I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of three great fathers, husbands here in the community of Bellflower, Mr. Paul Padilla, Mr. Milt Gilman, and Mr. Adan Ortega. I'd like to read a little bit, a little bio on each one of them. Mr. Paul Padilla passed away on December twenty first, twenty twenty, at the age of sixty seven. Paul attended the Lord's Church on Flower Street for over fifty years, where he met his wife Patty and raised their only daughter, Chrissy Padilla Berkey. He loved his family, classic cars, Omega Burger, and Chris and Pitts. In ways known only to the many people he quietly aided over the years, there will be a huge hole in Bellflower without him. He leaves behind a lifelong legacy of caring deeply for those who are lonely, sick, or forgotten in Bellflower. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Padilla family. Mr. Milt Gilman. Milt Gilman was born in Slaton, Minnesota, on August tenth, nineteen forty two, and recently passed away at the age of seventy eight. Actually, a neighbor of mine, about ten blocks or ten houses to to the left, a great individual. He was the oldest of four children and worked with his dad on the farm until going to DeBri Institute in Chicago. He moved to California at the age of eighteen. He began to attend Bethel Reform Church in nineteen sixty, where he was a faithful member up until the last week of his life. Milt got a job as a salt plant and worked there until until he got a job at the Thompson Furniture Store in Bellflower. He later drove trucks for Alpha Beta and and then Ralph's, where he then perfected attendance, where he had perfect attendance for several years and was awarded Driver of the Year with an all-expenses-paid trip to Hawaii. He met his wife Carol while cruising down Bellflower Boulevard in nineteen sixty five. They dated for a few years before marrying at Trinity Christian Reform Church on December twenty seventh, nineteen sixty eight. They had three children, Mike, Nicole, and Tim. Milt and Carol led a marriage class at Bethel Encounter Church, which were which were quite popular with young couples. He coached varsity softball at Valley Christian High School for the past five years, and he was voted the MVP of the team at the age of fifty for his incredible pitching skills in the City of Bellflower Championship. The City of Bellflower also awarded him with a Bravo Award in the in the past, which recognized acts of valor and outstanding services. Milt is survived by his loving wife Carol, brother Rod, sister Fay, Bob DeBoer, and Barb Ben DeYoung. Children Mike and Kerry Gilman, Chris and Nicole McAhee, and Tim and Jamie Gilman grandchildren, Kinsey and Matt Ciballera. Kylie Gilman, Morgan McAhee, Megan Gilman, Kobe Gilman, Tyler Gilman, Jake Gilman, and Dustin McAhee, and great-grandchildren, Aliha Mateo, Elijah Mateo, Ava Mateo, and Quentin Ciballera. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Gilman family. And last but not least, Adan Marcias Ortega. Adan Marcias Ortega was the father of Bellflower City Clerk Myra Ochiki. He was born in Michoacan, Mexico, on June first, nineteen fifty seven, and passed away on December twenty seven, twenty twenty, at the age of sixty eight due to complications with COVID nineteen. Adan married Irene Lopez in nineteen seventy four. In nineteen seventy eight, he and his young family moved to the city of to the United States, making home in Bellflower in nineteen eighty four. They raised their two sons and daughters in Bellflower, who attended and graduated Bellflower schools. He was an electrical engineer and a small business owner. He taught his children the value of hard work and a higher education. He is survived by his wife of forty six years, Irene, sons, Adan and Miguel, daughter Myra, and six very lovely grandchildren. He was preceded, he was preceded in death by his parents and two brothers. He is also survived by by three brothers and three sisters. Our deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences go out to the City Clerk Ochiki, to our City Clerk, City Clerk Ochiki, her family, and the entire Ortega family. One thing these two gentlemen had in common was that they raised three wonderful women who served the City of Bellflower, and you see that in in Nicole McAhee, Chrissy Padilla, and Myra Ochiki. So I want to thank them for for raising three wonderful women and their and other family members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for adjourning in their memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Mr. Hamada, did you have any memorials or were they completed by Mr. Sanchez?
No, that was it, Milt, for Milt Gilman.
All right. So we've got covered that. Councilmember Sunny Sanianez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I want to welcome back Margaret Romero, who's been reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission tonight. And secondly, I want to publicly thank Elizabeth Corpus for the appeal that she did for the Regional Housing Assessment with the Southern California Association of Governments last week. Although the appeal process is against us, she did a wonderful presentation. Elizabeth, thank you so much again for your wonderful presentation. And as as a as a highlight of that appeal, up to that point, no appeal has prevailed. Every everyone has been rejected. So I don't know what happened after our appeal, because there's someone seven more appeals after Bellflowers. And the bottom line is we need to provide housing for three thousand seven hundred twenty six units. So provide housing. We're not building housing. So we're providing housing, and that's gonna be our our mandate. Otherwise, there's gonna be consequence against the CD for future funding. So that's all right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanianez. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. All I have is I'd like to congratulate all the commissioners that were reappointed and appointed, newly appointed, and just say welcome to the team. That's it, Mayor. Short and sweet.
All right. Thank you, Ray. So I wanted to acknowledge the commissioners that serve for me and with me. And of course, we have George Franzine, who's being reappointed to the Planning Commission. Larry Wehage will continue to serve as our Public Safety member. And my newest guy is Garrett Byma, young guy, lives here in Bellflower, and he will serve on the Parks and Recreation Department. So I'm looking forward to having their input as we continue to govern the city. I know that as, you know, the new year starts, we all are hoping to get past this virus and move on to a brighter day and get our restaurants open and the other businesses that have been suffering. You know, it's we're all at a pretty low point now with we see the figures on how many people are being infected and passing away, including some of our own city folk that we love and acknowledge have been here a long time. So all I can say is keep your masks on, remain your social distancing, don't go out any more than you have to. And I like to think that at some point in the not-too-distant future, we're gonna turn the corner on this deal, and we'll have city council back in the council chambers. We're gonna have all the public back in here giving testimony, and that's our goal. But I want to acknowledge that we will tonight adjourn our meeting for the passing of Paul Padilla, Milt Gilman, who I hope they have someone who can drive the bus to Carnuda and Eucalyptus Street to pick up all those kids that go to their youth meetings. He's done that for years. And of course, Yvonne Marcias Ortega, our city clerk's father. So we're gonna adjourn this meeting in their memory, and our next meeting will be held here in City Hall, January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. We stand adjourned.